I want to welcome everybody to tonight's city council meeting. Appreciate you coming out. If you'll all please rise for the invocation which we give by Pastor William Parsons, Redeemer Lutheran Church, please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. In the name of the Father, Son, and Holy Spirit, amen. Heavenly Father, guardian and keeper of your people, watch over now those that trusted with the administration of Fairhope, Alabama. Make them pure and honest, keep them from temptation or bribery, from favoritism or prejudice, from indolence or neglect of their duties. Create in them an earnest desire to serve faithfully, attend to their efforts, that their work may not suffer from mediocrity. Permit them to experience the joys of noble service completed for a grateful people. Encourage cooperation from those who are served and from those who they help to serve. And use every willing service and every effort be put forth for good government in this place. Bless the rule over your people here, and that may your will be accomplished among them. And promote all things for the good of your kingdom of your son, in whose name we pray. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor Parsons. Okay, council. First order of business will be to approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting, the work session, and the agenda meetings which were held on January 28th. Do you have any changes that you would like to make to those minutes? Any additions, deletions? Okay, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes as submitted.
So moved.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Okay, minutes are approved. Mayor Wilson, your report, please.
Thank you, Council President. Recently, a citizen reached out to us with his concerns about the municipal pier. We have responded to him, but I also wanted to take this opportunity to give everybody an update. We've also posted this update on our frequently asked questions, part of our front page of our website. Hurricane Nate did more than tear out our existing electrical service on the municipal pier. It also brought to light that we were seriously under code, and any repairs would require us to bring the whole facility up to code. The scope of work was investigated by our in-house electrician, who determined that the repair work would involve more than what our electric department could handle. Consequently, we put together a formal scope of work that was needed, and went out to bid for a professionally engineered design for the new upgraded system. We are required, we're required to install. We must run entire new circuits under the pier, set a new transformer and new main panels for the electric shed, and replace each sub-panel in the marina. The transformer itself is not an off-the-shelf item, and had to be built to specifically meet our needs. The lead time on that alone was approximately six months. Then we had to make a change to the order to accommodate the specific environmentally safe oil for the transformer to meet the code specific to our water location. I know this is a lot of detail, but I just want you to know, this has been involved. So, we are now working with an electric contractor, who is under contract now, and had a pre-construction meeting last Thursday. Work will begin shortly, and we will, again, update this on the front page of the website. And Jeff, if you're here, I had a screenshot of the website, so they know where it is. It's on the front page of our website for, I'm sorry, never mind, I didn't put the, that's for something else. We anticipate the work taking about five months to complete. As I stated before Christmas, I'm in the process of establishing a Fairhope Local Committee that will help this administration better partner with our entrepreneurs and carry on the work of the original Fairhope Local Organization. We want to preserve Fairhope's unique character and promote its local businesses. Successful local business makes for a successful and vital community. Business owners will soon be able to sign up on the city website to join the effort and serve on the newly formed committee. Now, this was the screenshot from the website. That is for, let's see here, fiber, I'm gonna skip down. We have, that's a fiber survey. And, I'm sorry, this got out of order. So, to better serve our entrepreneurs and bring better quality of life to our citizens, we are talking fiber for Fairhope. We have been conducting a survey, which went out on Everbridge. If you have not signed up on Everbridge, it is also on the front page of our website. And this will update you on everything going on in the city, including meetings and things like this, for this survey. I've posted it, we've posted it to our website, and I've posted it to my Facebook. It takes just a few minutes to answer the questions on the survey. And this will help us supply, you know, the help we need to better serve you. Fairhope's Arbor Day celebration is set up for 10:00 a.m. to noon this Saturday, February 16th, on the coastal Alabama Community College campus facing Bancroft. Set to be honored as part of the celebration are Arbor Day poster contest winners, as well as the 2019 winners for the Individual and Business Beautification Awards. The Fairhope High School Jazz Band combo will entertain the crowd starting at 9:40 before the ceremony begins. And, as always, annually, we give out tree seedlings giveaways. And the trees available this year are American hornbeam, catapla, okay, fringe tree, western mahogany, green ash, longleaf pine, winged elm, arrowwood, pond cypress. And we'll also have a raffle for a fruit tree. We had partnered with the Fairhope Yacht Club to dredge the channel outside Fly Creek. It has unfortunately been a long drawn-out process due to the need for the city to rebid the project. The requests for bids have gone out, and a mandatory pre-bid meeting was held. Bid opening is scheduled for tomorrow. This is a major project and will benefit our marina greatly. We are excited that it will finally be underway. DARE, which stands for Drug Abuse Resistance Education, is an education program that seeks to prevent the use of controlled drugs, membership in gangs, and violent behavior. Our first DARE officer, Bunky Bishop, congratulated the seventh graders last Friday for being the first Fairhope class to graduate from the 10-week REAL program. And that had 40 students in it. REAL stands for, R is refuse, just say no, E is explain, tell your friends why you don't want to do it, A, avoid if you know that there may be illegal activity happening, and L, leave if you realize that the people around you are doing things that could lead to trouble. So, congratulations to those seventh graders. And last but not least, I have to thank our Director of Finance, who is our new city sleuth. Jill found a reimbursement form that had been submitted to us last spring, but it was never filled out for compensation. She has straightened out the issue, and the city will soon be reimbursed for $400,000 check from Aldot for the multi-purpose, multi-use pathway for the sidewalk from Rock Creek to Section Street. So, thank you so much, Jill. I did the happy dance when she gave it to me. And that's all I've got.
Okay, thank you Mayor Wilson. Next item will be public participation regarding agenda items only. You'll be given three minutes maximum. If you'd like to address the council on Agenda Items 5 through 30, if you come forward, please, just state your name and address for the record.
Ron Allen, 6612 Willow Bridge Drive. Item number 27, the mountain bike trails feasibility concept studies. I suggest that, as in the work study, y'all talked about a overview of the entire area, rather than just a mountain bike, that you asked University of South Alabama, Auburn, if they have graduate students and can do it for you, and overall concept, they'd probably love to do it, they're getting their degrees or whatever, so that is my suggestion.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Allen. Okay, if there being no one, I'll close public participation items for Agenda Items and remind everybody you'll have another opportunity at the conclusion of tonight's meeting to address the council on other matters that might be on your mind. Council comments? Let's go the other way. Councilman Boone.
I'm sure I have no comments.
You're taking my opportunity to go first, that's the whole reason you sit right here.
Counselman Brown.
Thank you, Council President. Yeah, if you weren't listening during the work session, or to the radio this morning, I mentioned the special tax district. The Education Advisory Committee has brought the recommendations to the council to vote, to allow the people of Fairhope, in the Fairhope school feeder pattern, to vote for a three-mil tax that would go to the Fairhope schools specifically. Three mils, giving you an idea of what kind of money that is gonna be. If you own, the average home in Fairhope is just under $300,000, so we use a $300,000 house, just for reference. Three mil per year on a $300,000 house is $90, so your property tax would go up $90 per year on a $300,000 house. That's what we're talking here. And so collectively, within the school feeder pattern, that would be $1.8 to $1.9 million that would be invested into our Fairhope schools while remaining in the county school More information will be coming up about this later. Like I said, just trying to get some information, so everybody knows what's going on. That's it.
Thank you. Counselman Conyers?
Yes, I've got several announcements. So, Fairhope Environmental Advisory Board had a meeting Friday at 3:00 p.m., and had an opportunity to meet with some city staff, and met with Sean from Fairhope Docs. They just wanted to reiterate to the city council that if any opportunities come up for the consideration of putting a boatyard back down there at the Fairhope docks, that they want to make sure that, within that lease, that we're still focusing on the clean and resilient marina, that kind of identification or award. Also, they have a special call meeting, February 22nd, that's a week from Friday, and that meeting is primarily gonna be to discuss their desire to support full-time technical staff to help with the implementation of some of the improvements we're being made to our infrastructure. Historic Preservation Committee meets Wednesday at 9:30 a.m., and the Library Board meets Monday at 3:00 p.m. That's a new time, and believe that is going to be the time moving forward, 3:00 p.m. It used to be 5:00 p.m. Lastly, I have my friends from Eastern Shore Kiwanis, Chris Williams and Ford Pope, sitting in the audience, and I would like for them to come up and just tell the city about a little project that the Kiwanis Club has had going on here lately. And Chris is currently president of Fairhope Kiwanis.
Thank you, Mr. Conyers. Please report to the city council and the mayor that the Fairhope Kiwanis Club, yesterday, had about 15 members out at Fells Playground, performing manual labor, raking, also replacing the boards of some of the fences, and we've undertaken a project to scrape off the paint from much-needed, very old paint on the slides and swings, and we're in the process of repainting that. We started yesterday, we'll be working that, again, having a group of volunteers out there on Sunday. And also, as part of our support of the Fells Playground, it's my honor and privilege to present to the city a check in the amount of $4,000 for the purchase of a new merry-go-round for the park. So I have that check, and I'll bring it to you now.
I'll take it. That's awesome.
Thank you all very much.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Well done.
Picture? We'll get a picture real quick, so we can post it. And thank you all.
Thank you, Chris and Ford.
Thank you.
That was my last comment.
Okay. Mr. Robinson, he came in an hour and a half late. Sir, if we can go next to last.
Oh, am I not last?
You're next to last, I'll go last.
I don't have any comments.
Really? Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I have a couple of things to report. The first item to report is not good news, and that is that I received word this afternoon that we were not approved for the hatch grant that we were gonna use for the purchase of the K-1 Center and renovations to the K-1 Center. I didn't have a lot of hope that, they said, "Well, you'll remain at the top of the list," but, you know, I'm not gonna hold my breath, so we will try to press forward with that purchase of that property. Without it, we'll need to plan on that, and also hopefully get busy on looking at other grant opportunities to make improvements to that property. So, be looking for ideas on that. Secondly, it was brought to my attention, middle of last week, about a Senate bill that's being proposed in Montgomery by one of our local senators, Mr. Chris Elliott, to force the municipalities in the state of Alabama to pull their police jurisdictions back to the city limits. And I know that some people are in favor of this, obviously Mr. Elliott's in favor of this, but I don't know that the city council of Fairhope is in favor of this. When we interviewed the four candidates for the position of Chief of Police, all four candidates said that they were in favor of leaving the police jurisdiction where it was. Now, what the impact to the city is, a loss of, I'm gonna estimate, a million and a half to $1.75 million in revenue. That would be immediate when this, when the law was to take effect. You know, there could be an argument made that it would, it would entice people to become a, to actually annex into the city. However, that might be a long time coming, if at all, so I have concerns over the immediate loss of income. I did hear that Mr. Elliott's argument was that it amounted to taxation without representation, to which I highly disagree with. They're not paying property taxes now, which is what gives you pretty much your vote. It would impact, it goes to sales tax, lodging tax, and business privilege tax, all of which are pass-through costs for those people. Currently, the people that are outside the city limits, but in our jurisdiction, are served by our police. We are giving them a benefit, and they're not paying property taxes. So I am adamantly opposed to this bill, and I want to ask the council to join me in coming up with a resolution opposing this bill. So, council, you don't have to give me an answer tonight, but I'm gonna look for some support to send a letter to Montgomery to tell them, no, we can decide for ourselves where we want our police jurisdiction to be, whether it be at the city limits, or a mile and a half, or three miles. So, with that, I'll close council comments, and move on to Agenda Item 5, revised planning commission terms for the council members. This is just cleaning up a couple of things, council members. The first three council members on the list have already served their terms. Actually, mine would expire into this month, and it just kind of evened out the length of the term, and actually got us through the entire term in office. So, it would be Councilmember Brown from March 1st to December 31st, 2019, and Councilman Boone would be January 1st, 2022. That would be October 31st of 20. So, that's the only real changes that were made to that. So, I would entertain a motion to revise these planning commission terms.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, thank you very much. Item 6 is a resolution, the city council authorizes Mayor Karen Wilson to execute a real estate purchase and sale agreement between the City of Fairhope and Utilities Board of the City of Foley, doing business as Riviera Utilities, that certain real property and improvements located at the northwest corner of Nichols Avenue and Young Street in Fairhope for a negotiated purchase price of $50,000. I believe we pulled this last week, tabled it, and we're just waiting to final confirmation that that was the purchase price. It looks like that is. Mr. Peterson did a good job in negotiating that price, it looks like a good fair price for that parcel of land. So, I will entertain a motion for the council to authorize the mayor to execute the real estate purchase agreement.
So moved.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Item 7 is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a contract between the City of Fairhope and the Ballin Pops for appropriation of $6,000. That's in cash, and in-kind services in the amount of $13,410 in resources, including personnel, but not security after normal business hours, and provide an exception to the sign ordinance by allowing banners for their citywide events to be displayed 10 days prior to these events to advertise and promote the City of Fairhope, and to provide free concerts yearly for the residents of Fairhope. The city council hereby repeals and replaces Resolution 3253-18 adopted on November 26, 2018. That's a long way of saying that the in-kind contributions went up by $2,390. If you look back there in your workbook, you'll see that the prior resolution authorized in-kind services in the amount of $11,020, and I believe that was just recalculated, and we got the proper amount of $13,410. Is that right, clerk?
One of the concerts was actually at the Civic Center, but they called and told me it was supposed to be on the bluff.
Okay. So, and it will also change that, one concert that was in the Civic Center will now be on the bluff. Can I entertain a motion to approve this appropriation in-kind services? All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further comments, questions? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, Item 8 is a resolution accepting all of Fairhope's public utilities located in the right-ofways within Anthem Oaks subdivision for maintenance, and to authorize Mayor Karen Wilson to execute the maintenance and guarantee agreement between the City of Fairhope and Anthem Development LLC. Mr. Dias, if you want to just come touch on this for a moment, Item 8 and 9, this is just standard operating procedures.
Yes, Sir, Council President, these are just standard operating procedures, accepting the utilities, they have been inspected, and we have no issues with this whatsoever.
Okay. Bonds have been provided, I see?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, council, I'll entertain a motion accepting all the utilities in Anthem Oaks subdivision.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, resolution passes, thank you. Item 9 is a resolution, accepting all of Fairhope's public utilities located in the right-ofways within Camilla at the Colony for maintenance, and to authorize the mayor to execute the maintenance and guarantee agreement between the City of Fairhope and a teachers' retirement system of Alabama. Everything in order, Wayne?
Yes, sir, it is.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to accept those utilities, council.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Thank you, council. Item 10 is a resolution, City of Fairhope hereby supports protecting local control over public streets and public assets, and a call on Congress to reaffirm such local control by reversing recent FCC actions related to wireless facilities by enacting H.R. Bill 530. If you look in your book, council, this pertains to local control of whether or not we allow high-speed broadband, wireline, and wireless services. Where is, Wayne, can you speak to this more, or is this a Richard Johnson discussion?
Council President, I don't know, I don't have any involvement with this, I'm not sure if I can speak to it appropriately or not.
Well, basically, it has to do with small cell tower authority. We had brought this up in a work session, and I believe that we had even talked about maybe formulating some ordinances controlling this. Well, this would even take our control away from us to even enact ordinances.
Yes, sir, that's exactly, that's exactly right. We, as you, as we talked about at a previous work session, AT&amp;T approached us about installing a small cell 5G network-type towers, towers, poles in the right-ofway. After doing some further research, the Telecommunications Act, federal act, limits our authority on regulating those. There are some things we can do, but outright prohibition was not one of those. Just to give an update on that process, AT&amp;T did submit for 15 poles throughout the city at this past week's Development Review Committee meeting. One of our staffers, Mike Jeffries, did a very good job. He went to each site that they had planned, and looked around for co-location opportunities and look at on existing locations that had the appropriate height and so forth. I'm happy to tell you that, I think out of 15 sites, 13 of those, I believe we've gained some cooperation on that, and they're gonna try to co-locate those on some surrounding areas that would fit their needs. And so that took us quite a while to do that. We probably took about an hour to go through each one of those with AT&amp;T at this meeting, which we did video, it is on the website. And only two locations required an existing pole, and even those, I think we're gonna have those camouflaged. So, this is important, it does take control away from the municipalities and the city, but in our current situation, we did work with them and did have a result we felt that was fair in that process.
Let me read this one paragraph from the resolution. It says, "Whereas by means of orders issued on August 2nd, 2018, and September 26, 2018, the Federal Communications Commission," we know it as the FCC, "took unprecedented sweeping action to prevent local governments from effectively managing public assets and to severely compromise their ability to manage the public streets effectively and equitably, taking into account considerations for public safety, public utility services such as water, sewer, gas, and electricity, the traveling public environmental concerns, and economic development, and further effectively requires local taxpayers to subsidize use of public streets and other public assets by the wireless industry."
That's ridiculous.
Thank you, Mayor, I agree. All right, so I will entertain, by the way, the, this is the, the Alabama legal municipalities supports the language in this resolution.
And, Council President, if I could just, I mean, you know, as you all know, the City of Fairhope has gone to great lengths to try to enhance and improve the aesthetic element of the city, planting flowers and street trees and those kind of things, and so I think when we were dealing with AT&amp;T, our primary concern was, we don't want to add any more visual clutter. Obviously, you have to have some of those because of, you know, street lights and traffic lights, those kind of things, but we wanted to try to alleviate as much clutter as you can. And I think this case would, we would not have any say-so, apparently, in that process, which I think is, could be very detrimental to not only the City of Fairhope, but many other municipalities across the country who do really care about this, the effects of the city.
Thank you. So, council, in other words, this would be to overturn that bill in Congress, so I'll ask for a motion to support the protecting of local control over the public streets and public assets?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Thank you, council. Item 11 is a resolution, the City of Fairhope vote to purchase the 36-month renewal protection plan for irrigation computer system for the Quell Creek Golf Course. From Jerry Page Turf and Irrigation as a sole source distributor for the Toro Company and authorizes procurement based on the option allowed by the Code of Alabama with a total cost of $11,145.33. Entertain a motion?
So moved.
Okay, have a motion and a second, to purchase the 36-month renewal. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, thank you, council. Item 12 is a resolution, the City of Fairhope approves the procurement of renewal of support for firewall security system for the city departments, including the police department, through the National IPA Buying Cooperative, and is exempt from the formal bid pursuant to Code of Alabama with a total cost of $13,051.26. Entertain a motion to approve the procurement?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. If anybody wants me to ask Jeff to come in and just explain any of this, just stop, man, I know we're going through this pretty fast. Item 13 is a resolution, Mayor Karen Wilson is hereby authorized to execute a contract for extension number 2 of RFQ number 008-17, lift station odor control chemical for the sewer department, with BioMagic, Inc. for an additional one year, as per the terms and conditions of the original contract. The cost is $6 per meter gallon for an estimated, annual estimated cost of $224,475, based on the cost in FY 2018. All budgeted, right? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to execute the contract?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Did anybody happen to see the description when they scrolled in there? That was appointment of special prosecutors. Need some sleep. Item 4- Item 14 is a resolution. Mayor Karen Wilson is hereby authorized to execute a contract for extension number two of bid number 011-17, tree trimming services 2017 for the electric department with Burford's Tree, Inc., for an additional one year, as per the terms and conditions of the original contract. The cost is $173.28 per unit hourly billing for an annual estimated cost of $260,000 based on FY 2018 needs. I'll entertain a motion to execute the contract?
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Is this in addition to what the, to what the electric department does on their own, or is it, or do we outsource all of the, the tree trimming for the, around the line maintenance?
This contract is our big tree trimming, so if we can give them a circuit, they go and give them a certain section of the system, and they'll go and trim all those trees. We still do some minor tree trimming, so if we get a tree and a limb or something like that, we'll have one of our guys go in and just take care of it.
Gotcha.
So, but this is the contract for the major tree trimming, like it's down Section Street or something like that.
Okay.
Bless you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, counsel? All right, I'll entertain a motion. Or did already do that?
You already did all that.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of authorizing the mayor to execute the contract, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, item 15 is a resolution. The City of Fairhope vote to procure 40 push-to-talk devices and services for 157 devices through Verizon. The equipment is available for direct procurement through the South Alabama Purchasing Association and therefore does not have to be let out for bid. It's already been nationally bid through SAPA's bid process, with a total cost of $50,824.08. I'll just say, counsel, I did a little researching of this, and I talked to a few people, I even talked to the current provider of the push-to-talk, and asked him to give me, you know, a reason why we shouldn't change that. I never, I never heard a good reason why, why we shouldn't change that, so I think that the city staff is in favor of this. I even talked to one former city employee that said we could go to VHF radios if we wanted. There's some frequencies that we have allotted, and then, you know, the system's not going to change every two years, and we have to get new radios, but when you look at 157 devices, it seemed like a pretty low cost for $50,000 for the, for the 40 push-to-talk devices and the services for 157 devices through Verizon, so I chose not to dig into it anymore. So, I'll entertain a motion to procure the 40 push-to-talk devices and services for 157 devices through Verizon.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries, thank you. Item 16 is a resolution. The City of Fairhope vote to purchase a 2019 Ford F-250 Supercab four-by-two pickup for the golf department. Type of vehicle needed is on the Alabama State Department of Purchasing bid list, therefore does not have to be let out for bid, with a cost of $25,644. Is somebody checking me on these budgeted items?
$644, over.
Okay. All right, I'll entertain a motion for the purchase?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I was just going to say, having priced some three-quarter ton pickups recently, that's a pretty darn good buy for, for 250 right there, so. All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries, thank you, counsel. Item 17 is a resolution. The City of Fairhope vote to procure recycling sanitation cans and lids for FY 2019. The items are available for direct procurement through the National Intergovernment Purchasing Alliance and U.S. Communities, and therefore does not have to be let out for bid. It's already been bid nationally through both groups' bid process. The total cost is not to exceed $91,286, as we heard from Mr. Johnson in a work session. We estimate it to be, you know, probably around $60,000, thereabouts, so. I'll entertain a motion to purchase these cans?
So moved.
Second.
Or a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries, thank you, counsel. Item 18 is a resolution. The City of Fairhope vote to purchase a Kubota diesel turn mower, diesel zero-turn mower for the rec department. Type of equipment needed is on the Alabama State Purchasing Bid List, therefore does not have to be let out for bid, with a total cost of $13,068.97. Where's that to budget?
It's $431 under.
All right. I'll entertain a, a motion for the purchase?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Okay, purchase is approved, thank you. Item 19 is a resolution. The City of Fairhope approves procurement of Neptune gas meters for the gas department for fiscal year 2019. Purchased as needed from Consolidated Pipe and Supply Company as sole-source provider in the state of Alabama for Neptune Technology Group. The units must fit into our existing standardized system and are exempt from formal bid pursuant to Code of Alabama. The estimated number of units is 400 ERTs at $75 per unit at a not-to-exceed annual cost of $30,000. Entertain a motion to make the procurement?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the purchase, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries, thank you. Item 20 is a resolution. The City of Fairhope approves the procurement of gas meters with connections and regulators for the gas department for fiscal year 2019 to be purchased as needed from Elster American Meter Company as sole-source provider in the state of Alabama. These units must also fit in our existing standardized system and are exempt from formal bid pursuant to Code of Alabama 1975. The estimated number of units is 400 gas meters and accessories at a not-to-exceed annual cost of $71,690.68. How does that fit into budget, Kevin?
It's actually inventoried. It's what it should have listed as.
They're inventoried?
Yes, sir.
It's got it on there that way.
I got you. All right, NA on the budget. All right, very good. All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the procurement of the gas meters?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Item 21 is a resolution. The City of Fairhope vote to procure a John Deere Fairway mower for the rec department. The equipment is available for direct procurement through the Sourcewell Purchasing Co-op, therefore does not have to be let out for bid. It's already been nationally bid through Sourcewell's bid process at a cost of $56,548.60. Entertain a motion for the procurement?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? That is $2,548 over budget. See Richard. Okay. We have a motion and a second. Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries, thank you, counsel. Item 22 is a resolution. The City of Fairhope approves the procurement, procurement of a communication board and module boards for the UV 4,000-plus. For the sewer department to be purchased from Jim House and Associates as sole-source provider in the state of Alabama and Northwest Florida, the units must fit into our existing standardized system and are exempt from formal bid pursuant to Code of Alabama. The total cost is $15,046, as we discussed in the work session earlier tonight. I will entertain a motion to approve the procurement of the communications board?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Item 23 is a resolution. The City of Fairhope vote to purchase the new upgraded emissions skater system for 12 lift stations. These materials are needed, used, and consumed in the operation of our sanitary sewer system and authorized for procurement without formal bid based on the option allowed by Code of Alabama. The annual cost is $35,880. Is that an annual cost? That's a, that's a one-time cost. That'd be another, item for another day, wouldn't it? Okay. All right, so let's say the, just strike the word annual out. The cost is $35,880, and we'll see if that's in the formal resolution like that. I'll just take out the word annual there. I'll entertain a motion to vote for the emissions skater system?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Okay, motion carries, thank you, counsel. Item 24 is a resolution. The City Council hereby approves amendment number one and authorizes the mayor to execute amendment number one to the contract with blue diving and salvage, which decreases the total amount from $53,900 to $21,400. This was the clamping device that Jay discussed in the work session as well, so. Entertain a motion to approve the amendment number one?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Item 25 is a resolution. The City Council approves Neil Schaefer for an increase to the construction engineering inspection services for new sidewalks to the Manley Road Soccer Complex. How dot tap grant number T A P A A dash T A 16, 930, due to reviewing National Environmental Policy Act requirements and the National Flood Insurance Program. Certification where two issues were found and authorizes Mayor Karen Wilson to execute amendment number one to the contract with a not-to-exceed $20,000 for additional geotechnical and structural engineering, investigation, and design, therefore, thereby increasing the new estimated total amount for the project to be $508,865. We only have to pay the 20% of that? So we pay 4,000 of that, probably, of the 20,000?
Let me restate that. On the tap grant, engineering upfront's 100% on the city.
Okay.
And we were approved up to a maximum project grant for 500,000, meaning that they'll reimburse us 400,000.
Okay.
The issue we ran into is that the original concept that was put forth in 2016 was to do a low crossing of, of that portion of Cowpen Creek that goes under Canal Road 13. We could not get through our NEPA process. They, they denied the design concept based not only on wetland impacts.
We needed a new bridge like the one going over to Rock Creek.
That's what we're going to do, aluminum pedestrian bridge, and we're still projecting 508,000 in construction with 400,000 being reimbursed.
Okay, excellent. Any questions for Mr. Johnson, counsel? Okay, if not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the increase in the construction engineering inspection services for the new sidewalks?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay. Motion carries. Item 26 is a resolution. The City, Fairhope City Council approves and authorizes Mayor Karen Wilson to allow the use of one idle 20-foot trailer to be used as parade transportation for local veterans in the KLR Marty Graul Parade on February 23, 2019, and declares this is a public purpose as the local veterans provide services throughout the year and also promote the City of Fairhope. And I believe we, this is the second year that we've done this, maybe second or third year?
Seven.
Okay, counsel, I'll entertain a motion to approve the use of this?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Item 27 is a resolution. The City Council hereby authorizes Mayor Karen Wilson to execute an agreement for professional services with International Mountain Bicycle Association Trail Solutions to complete a mountain bike trails feasibility concept study for the City of Fairhope with a not-to-exceed amount of $9,730. I'll entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second?
I do want to mention real quick that the selection of the professional services is, is the role of mayor, and this does usurp my role as mayor. I wasn't even discussed that this was going to be added. But I also sent an email to each individual councilperson about why I felt like this needed to be put in an overall plan, and never got any, any response.
Mayor, you typically do, you know, you do choose professional services, but it's also within the council's authority to select professional services provider if they, if they would like to, and this is not unprecedented, we have done this at least, I know of, one time before. I also want to say that the expense on 27 is similar to a $20,000 increase on 25, and that wasn't a budgeted item, neither is this, and we come to work at.
The role is that I choose and you approve. If you don't approve, then, then you can, that's not, I mean, the professional services is the role of mayor.
All right, we have a motion and a second. One last comment, as I would really like to push forward with a, and Mr. Allen's comments were well-taken and well-spoken earlier, is that I would really like to push forward with a sidewalk, not a sidewalk plan, but a walking trails plan for that park to, you know, as we're working on the bicycle trail, if we could approach Auburn or South Alabama, maybe they do have a graduate student that could, you know, do a, I hope they don't do a dissertation, but some kind of work on this for us to, to start looking at that, because I think that that's probably more needed than the bike, bicycling trail, although I support it as well. With that, uh...
I've got just a comment, and I think, you know, I kind of feel like we are putting the cart before the horse a little bit with this, because we don't know how this will fit into the overall project, but, you know, I think to maybe Councilman Brown's point at the same time, if it takes us another five years to get to the point of, of doing something, then at least, I guess you would have had some access to it during that time, but that would kind of be dependent on how much it costs to actually construct the trails.
Right, and that's another thing to point out, Councilman Conyers, is this is just the study, this is not constructing them. So there's time, and also, I don't think that bicycle trails made out of, you know, natural surfaces is something that can be, it can't be undone as well, should we not like the outcome. Any other comments? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of the resolution? Pardon me?
Can the city attorney confirm what I said?
Uh, sure, Mr. Attorney, would you like to rule on whether or not the city council can select a professional services provider?
I'm saying is they can to do a function.
We can, right?
Yeah.
Yes. Okay, I know that we had done this once before. We could also not accept one of your selections and choose, choose one of our own as the, as the contract.
Right, when there's an impasse, that's when you select, and that's what happened last time. I haven't even had the opportunity, I've discussed it with y'all via email individually, but nobody responded to me on this, and the professional services is the role of mayor, and then you approve. If you don't approve, then when you have an impasse, y'all select. This came directly from TUT.
Mayor, is there another firm that you have in mind in regard to this?
I would both want to communicate with Sherry Lee to find out funding sources incorporated into the overall, I mean, I sent this email. I mean, I can read it if you want me to.
I don't think that's necessary. I'm just, I'm just, you know, this, like Jack just said, this is simply a study to find out if it's even feasible to do out there.
But it doesn't incorporate.
You know, grants and all those other things would come, well, it can. I mean, again, it's a study to look at what we can do out there. It's not a firm plan of what is going to happen. It is currently an unused piece of property, that this is simply the feasibility of whether there is some actual use we can use in the short term while we come up with a grand master plan.
This, this is about a mountain bike trails feasibility. I just think it's, it's only a portion of what we want to accomplish on this property.
Well, up until a week ago, when Robert brought him to the work session, we had nothing that we wanted to accomplish on that property as far as what had been presented in these meetings. And I think this is just something that gives a small group, and we recognize it as a small group, some use for the short term if it even is determined that this is a feasible alternative on this property. I just think this is.
Go ahead, have a move forward.
Any further comments?
Mayor wants to select somebody else. I have no ties to this company doing the feasibility study. This is just who the group brought to me. I didn't, I didn't think this company.
I didn't think it would be, you know.
I just hate to see this get drug out five years, wait for a grand master plan, when this property is going to remain in the natural state to begin with.
In my email that I sent y'all, I said that I'm in favor of doing this. Again, I've encouraged you to read the email and respond to me.
I did read it.
You read it, but I'll respond it again in more detail about how this is.
We're running $6 million of deficit, and now we're almost self-sufficient, and it got so off track from bike trail, I didn't respond.
No, that's, I said that when you get to a point of almost self-sufficiency, you know, that's when we can use more money of the profits of utilities to do the community development.
All right, counsel. We have a motion and a second on the table. I'll call the question. All those in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay? Okay, motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Item 28 is a reappointment to the Historic Preservation Committee. That is, the nominee is for a three-year term, reappointment of Mr. Gary Gover for a term ending February of 2022. I'll entertain a motion for the reappointment of Mr. Gary Gover?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Gary has been a longtime member of the committee, and I think he would continue to be an asset.
Okay. All right. All those in favor of the reappointment, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay? Okay, motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Item 29 is a request by the very patient tonight, Fairhope volunteer, actually not very patient, they finally left.
There's one still here.
You have to be here. I'm impressed. It hadn't even been an hour yet. Request of the Fairhope Volunteer Fire Department requesting to use, the use of the Civic Center in the parking lot for the Cook Teams for its third annual barbecue cook-off. Smoke them if you got them. Fundraisers could benefit the fire department on Saturday, March 30th, from 6:00 a.m. to Sunday, April 1st, at 12:00 a.m. Services needed will be barricades, electric junction boxes, water, trash, and recycling bins, a trash truck, AC restroom trailer, two light towers, city stage, police officers, and several of the city tailgate tents. We're also requesting permission to sell alcohol, beer, alcohol contingent upon an ABC license and approval, and that all fees will be waived for this event. Chief Hollinghead, any reason to deny this request of the fire department? Have y'all got enough officers to contain these guys? I mean, at least if they're here, they'll be contained, maybe. So, anyway. Counsel, I'll entertain a motion to grant the request?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay? Request is granted. Item 30 is an application for beer and wine on-off premises licensed by Jarrett Crum for Gulf Coast Pinball LLC doing business as Fairhope Pens and Pints located at 212B Fairhope Avenue in Fairhope, Alabama. Chief Hollinghead, do you know of any reason to deny this application? Where is 212B Fairhope Avenue? Somebody tell me where that is?
Down the Alamo Lake, is it going?
Oh, that's right. That's right. Oh, yeah, thank you. I knew that. That's right. Okay. So down towards the Tex-Arboama BBQ. It's gonna be on the left there, right? I did remember, I do remember that now. Okay. All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve this application?
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay? Okay, motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Next item is public participation. For non-agenda items, you'll be limited to three minutes. If you'd like to bring something forth before the council, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Oh, I gotta get him on the clock.
Please, please don't. Well, good evening. My name's John Manellis. I live at 104 White Avenue, and I'll just first state that I really appreciate all that you six elected officials do for us, council president Burrell, council members, and you, Mayor Wilson. I don't think our citizens realize as much time and effort that you put into what you do for the city, and it's greatly appreciated. I had a boss who would say, "Don't come to me with complaints. Come to me with solutions." And I thought that was some pretty constructive advice, and it's actually in that spirit this evening that I come to you with at least one individual's thought about what occurred at the last council meeting. The last council session, you spent about 35 minutes on a single topic, the leasing of landscape equipment for the golf course. Presumably, all of you involved in reviewing this matter were well-intentioned, but to cite Councilman Conyers, all of this could have been cleared up with both sides talking to each other. One could say there was a breakdown in communication, but that would imply there was communication to begin with, which it doesn't appear to have been the case. So is this the best example of how business should be conducted on behalf of the citizens, no matter how well-intentioned? So what can each of you do to bridge the divide between the mayor's office and the city attorney? Or really, a better question is, removing the personalities from the equation, is there a better way to provide legal services to the city? I think there is. The City of Fairhope, as you well know, is a $60 million enterprise with 300 full-time employees and 100 part-time employees. It's the fastest-growing city in the state and the fastest-growing county. These demands require the city to do business differently, in some cases, than what we've done in the past. The running of the city is a full-time endeavor, not a part-time one. Where we have relied on contract services in the past may not best serve our present and future needs. Running a, such an enterprise requires, in my opinion, full-time legal staff, not exclusively for the mayor, but for the overall daily business of the city. Personnel labor issues, procurement issues, enforcement actions, zoning disputes are just a few of the many issues that arise in a growing city of this size. The argument you will hear against in-house counsel is that these require specialization, that it's better served by contracting on an as-needed basis. Not so. Many companies have in-house, in-house counsel, general counsel, as the name implies, general counsel. So maybe I'll direct these to Jay Robinson, but correct me if I'm wrong on how things are done nowadays, but when I attended my first semester of law school, and might I add my last semester, my first course included contracts as well as civil procedure. So the point being is that a general attorney can handle many of the day-to-day issues that confront the city. I have no idea what the city pays for contracted legal services on an annual basis, but my guess would be that it either meets or exceeds what at least one full-time in-house counsel would cost. Almost done. If I was mayor of the city, which, no, thank you, I would choose not to be, but if I was, I would want a full-time city attorney, two doors down from my office, to ensure that I'm making the best decisions and that all the city employees are doing the same as it relates to legal matters. So if the mayor is not making the best decisions from a legal standpoint, as was suggested at the last meeting, then give her and the city employees and future administrations the tools to do so with in-house counsel. Although the council performs important functions, they do that on a part-time basis. Running the city is a full-time effort. Isn't that where our legal resources should be placed? The issue is less about who appoints the city attorney, whether it be the city council or the mayor, and that could be easily changed by city ordinance. It's more about who the city attorney serves as his or her client base. That client base is the mayor, all of the city employees, and the city council. The relationship between the mayor and the city attorney has become contaminated with hostility and non-cooperation, and it's not likely to improve. Members of the council, all I would ask is that the current, the current situation is a disservice to you. It's a disservice to the mayor, and it's a disservice to the citizens that you serve. So I urge you to seek, or I urge you to explore all possible solutions, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Manellis. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council?
Bob Riggs, 114 Chestnut Ridge. I want to join my colleague in expressing appreciation for all you do, the council and city, all you do for, for our beautiful city. At our January 28th council meeting, we were subjected to a diatribe between our mayor and our city attorney. We simply must do better than this for this delightful community. I'd like to comment on two aspects of this exchange between the mayor and our city attorney. In the context of this discussion, our city attorney stated that he was unable to issue an affirmative opinion to the Wells Fargo, Wells Fargo Bank that the proposed lease agreement complied with applicable state of Alabama bid laws. What? We are not complying with Alabama law in our purchasing and leasing activities? As stated by Council President Burrell at this meeting, the city council controls the finances of the city. The city council is the final fiduciary responsibility for our city finances. So, gentlemen, this accusation is squarely on your desk. For the public good, you must immediately investigate this charge and implement remedial steps if necessary to ensure that our citizens in this city know that we're complying with pertinent state laws. I'm struck by the fact that recent audits of the city's finances conducted by an independent CPA firm did not issue any findings addressing the city attorney's assertions. Moreover, we all know and understand that the city maintains a comprehensive framework of internal controls. Yet our city attorney cites multiple violations of state purchase laws associated with a single lease, absence of purchase order, inconsistencies between council resolution and the approved city budget, improper legal language in a lease document, failure to consult with the state's open bid list, and so forth and so forth. My recommendation is that you bring in the CPA firm that has conducted our audit and ask them to hear the city attorney's specific charges and evidence purporting to support these assertions. Then to again review our administrative practices and safeguards. Finally, ask the CPA firm to deliver to the council their foundings and findings and recommendations in a public forum. My second and final comment. On two occasions, our city attorney stated that the mayor sought to issue invalid contracts and therefore exposed herself to personal liability. Those are extremely serious charges, probably pointing to abuse of power and malfeasance. Certainly, they were not issues of errors or omissions. Now, the attorney was not specific with his accusations, and he did not provide any evidence to support his statements. Nevertheless, gentlemen, he made this charge in a public arena, which speaks clearly to the integrity of our elected mayor. Now, Jay, please help me. In this circumstance, I believe that the mayor should be accorded at least rudimentary due process. The attorney should present his charges with specificity and provide the evidence which he claims support the allegations. The mayor, in turn, must have the opportunity to rebut and to review and then to rebut these assertions, all this in a public forum. My suggestion is that the city council ask our attorney to recuse himself from this issue. Counsel should engage an independent attorney to handle this due process hearing and ask the attorney to deliver recommendations to the council pursuant to these deliberations. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Riggs. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council? Okay, seeing no one, I will close public participation and ask the council to consider going into executive session to discuss the purchase, sale, exchange, lease, or market value of real property, and I will read the letter from Attorney Marcus McDowell. It says, "As city attorney, I, Marcus McDowell, hereby request the Fairhope City Council go into executive session based on Alabama Code to discuss the consideration the city is willing to offer except when considering the purchase, sale, exchange, lease, or market value of real property. Discussions could have a detrimental effect upon the competitive position of the city in negotiations if the matter was discussed in public. As city attorney, I hereby request the City Council, as City of Fairhope, rise from regular city council meeting on Monday, February 11th, 2019, to go into executive session. The city council shall be in executive session for approximately 30 minutes. At the end of the executive session, the city council shall return to the city council chambers to resume the regular city council meeting." And I will say, I don't know if there will be any motions or resolutions drawn up when we come back. I would say there's a, a chance, maybe 40% chance, maybe 50% chance that we would come out with a resolution, but I can't swear to it. So if you want to stick around for 30 minutes and wait for something to come out of that, that's entirely up to you. But I will now ask the city council to make a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay? Okay, we'll be back in 30 minutes. convene, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay? All right, we're adjourned. Thank you.